Let me know.
Okay, we are recording now and we are now broadcasting.
All right, welcome everyone. This is the Board of Trustees meeting at the State Bar of California. Want to called meeting to order. I want to note for everyone who is attending both panelists and attendees that this is a Zoom meeting like a regular in-person meeting of the board. It is recorded and will be archived on the State Bar's website. Ms. Colman, would you please call the roll?
Broton.
Here.
Chen.
Here.
Sis Narros.
Here.
Dela Cruz. Dellen.
Here.
Duran.
Here.
Iglesias. LeBron. Manning.
Here.
Protula.
Here.
Seleg.
Here.
Stallings.
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Can I, can I note one thing real quickly? I see that we have a member of the Board of Trustees who is logged on as an attendee. We may have the ability to promote him. I know that Ellen and Luis are working on that right now. The other alternative is to ask that, I think the promotion might have just happened.
Yes, it did.
Terrific. So for roll call, you might just want to call Chris Iglesias again, Sarah.
Iglesias.
Here, thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. For everyone in attendance, I want to explain how we're going to proceed with today's meeting. We're going to take the items on the agenda in the order they appear on the agenda. We will begin open session in a few minutes with item 701 and 702. Before we begin discussing item 703, we will go into closed session so that we may discuss that in closed session. We will come out of closed session and continue our discussion of 703, 704, and 705 again. We will be taking public comments today, and there are two ways or two times that you can, if you would like to speak as a member of the public to the board, there are going to be two times to do that. At the beginning of the meeting, if you have, would like to do it then and then leave the meeting or just observe from then on, you can do it at the very opening part of the meeting in just a few minutes. If you prefer to wait and direct your remarks regarding a particular agenda item to the board, you can wait before we begin the discussion of that agenda item. In the case of item 703, we will invite public comment just before we go into close, so we'll have the benefit of whatever comments you may want to make during our closed session. So the, the procedure for indicating that you would like to speak and to be invited to speak will be that for those of you who have attending via Zoom, there is a function for virtually raising your hand, which is at the bottom of your screen. If you do wish just to do that, just reuse that raise hand function. If you are participating by phone, you may virtually raise your hand by pressing star nine. That's the star key and then the number nine key, and doing so in either way will alert us if you would like to make a comment. The, the way that the comments will proceed is the, we will call members of the public in the order that they were, they raise their hands virtually. Ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. At two and a half minutes after you've begun, a staff member will inform you that you have 30 seconds remaining. And then at the end, he will, he or she will thank you, and we will move on to the next person by muting your mic. So please limit your comments to three minutes. All right. Let's now go to public comment. If there are any public members who would like to speak, please raise your hand. I see already that we have Jay Aguirre. Is there anyone else? All right, I'm not sure that I know. So Mr. Or Ms. Aguirre, do you want to speak now to at this time?
And may I ask the, the person who's looking to speak?
Not at this time.
Okay, so we will, can you tell us which item you'll be looking to address in public comment?
It was with regard to rule changes under the coronavirus. And I, I have the summary. I don't have the actual agenda item number.
Okay. You want to, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I thought he indicated that he wanted to speak prior to that item.
I know, not prior to that item. I'm sorry.
Would you like to speak now?
No, I can wait until after that item. Or during the public comment period for that item if there is one.
Why don't, why don't you go ahead and speak now? Because we're trying this Zoom process out, it may get a little complicated. So if you don't mind, we'd be happy to have you speak now.
Okay, I did review the proposal to provide a process given the coronavirus situation, certain fees is in particular late fees that would accrue after the date of the governor's orders and so on. What is not there and what I hope will be a part of plans to be announced soon are fees related to the exams that are coming up. And I know that's still in the process of being worked out. But hearing the news, it appears clear from the press conference yesterday, the governor had and the mayor here in Los Angeles that there are going to be postponements for those exams. As you all know, I served on the Board of Governors previously in two terms on the Committee of Bar Examiners. I'm very familiar with the process. I also graded it for 10 years, and so I know the timelines on the process very well. My concern is that people are already in the penalty period to sign up for that exam if they've held off. And they also are in the quandary of purchasing those exam preparation courses and materials and, and so on. They're very, very expensive. They can run anywhere from a few hundred dollars to over $10,000. And so from the standpoint that that isn't covered in this announcement, and I realized that that decision process maybe isn't there yet. I wanted to raise the topic because there are literally, when I graded, there was already 10,000 people who would take a summer sitting for the exam. And as you know, the process, I would probably grade 800 to 1,000 of those on the question that was assigned to me and so on. For the students, the strain that they're under financially and in terms of mentally, for their mental health, they need as much settled ground with as much lead time as possible. And so that, that's the comment that I wanted to make. I'm not suggesting what the answer to that question would be, only that as soon as possible, the applicant should be advised if they are going to get an extended period within which to sign up for programs or to sign up for the bar exam. That will help them tremendously. And that, that basically is the comment that I wanted to make.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your taking the time to give us your views and, and we've certainly heard them. Is there anyone else either on the Zoom webinar or attending by telephone who would like to make a comment at this time? All right. Well, then let's go on to the next order of business, which is the Chair's report. Just a few very brief items. Two days ago, the board met and discussed the situations with the California Bar Examination and the First Year Law Student Examination. And after a very thoughtful and considered discussion, decided on its recommendations to the Supreme Court, which have been sent by letter yesterday to the Chief Justice and the Associate Justices of the Court. I want to thank again the Committee of Bar Examiners, especially Robbie, the Chair, and the staff who've worked on this and all the people who submitted comments on this very difficult issue. We appreciate the efforts of everyone and we look forward to the most easy, if you will, transition to the new paradigm that we're going to be facing. I also want to thank the, the staff for the way that it has responded to the challenges posed by the shelter and home and other restrictions. The work of the bar continues, the protection of the public continues, and it has been made possible by the hard work and significant efforts of every person on the bar staff. The board, and I speak on behalf of the board for this, very much appreciates everybody's very dedicated efforts. And so thank you again. Finally, I'd also like to thank Dan Cloud and the other folks from IT who have helped put together these two Zoom meetings, which so far have gone off just almost flawlessly. It's been a very eye-opening experience, and I'm very appreciative of the effect that we've come so far so quickly in our ability to meet and be productive in this format. All right, the next item of business is the Consent Agenda. There are two items on the Consent Agenda. And does anyone wish to pull either of those items from the Consent Agenda? All right, if not, then those will be deemed approved. All right, we have
Chair.
Reports from the Board Committees.
Chair, excuse me.
Yes.
This is the Secretary. I was informed because of this, this is a teleconference meeting, we actually do have to do a roll call vote on both of the consent items.
Oh.
Mr. Chair, I'll move, I'll move the consent calendar. Duran.
All right, please call the roll.
I, I missed who seconded the motion.
Set it. I said.
Okay, Broton.
Yes.
Chen.
Yes.
Sis, Sis Narros.
Aye.
Dela Cruz. Dellen.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Iglesias.
Yes.
LeBron.
Yes.
Manning. Oh, LeBron.
Yes.
Okay, Manning.
Yes.
Protula.
Yes.
Seleg.
Yes.
Stallings.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, great.
On both items.
Thank you. Okay. Item number 100 on the agenda is reports of the Board Committees. I am the Chair of the Board Executive Committee, and I have nothing new to report today. The Regulation and Discipline Committee, Mr. Stallings, do you have anything?
Right. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Vice Chair Ruben Duran and myself have been busy meeting with the State Bar Court, CTC and OGC, and collaborating with the Defense Bar to draft and implement emergency orders. Several of the emergency orders and rules will be discussed later on in the meeting. Few highlights include electronic service and electronic signatures and a path forward to utilizing conference calls and video conferencing to conduct ENDCs in a shelter-in-place climate. So cases continue to be filed to prevent future harm to the public. At this time, I'd like to recognize the hard work of Erica Doherty and Michelle Crampton over at the State Bar Court, and the responsiveness of Judges Purcell, Roland, and balancing the safety of litigants with due process rights of the respondents. A big thank you to Vanessa Holden and James Cheng of OGC and your insight to these issues. Dawn and Ruben in keeping the place spinning. And finally, a big thank you to Melanie Lawrence and Steve Moat and your entire OCTC staff in quickly figuring out the logistics of work from home and ensuring that public protection remains the State Bar's number one priority, even in these challenging times. While not a RAD project, there are direct implications on the probation department and potential redesign through the ASAR project. As we continue work on this, we work towards an approach that aids in the rehabilitation of lawyers who have been convicted and seek to reduce recidivism among offenders. One other thing in response to the Farcus Report findings and Professor Robertson's potential resolutions, RAD continues to engage with the Bench Bar Coalition on the formation of a subcommittee that will look at ways OCTC, State Bar Court, and the Defense Bar can ensure that due process for self-represented respondents is achieved. And then finally, get to the ADR. We'll hear from staff that, kind of a nutshell, despite an increase in complaint requests and the challenges of implementation of a new case management system, OCTC staff has worked exceptionally hard throughout the year to reduce the backlog of our highest priority cases and maintain a high percentage of cases that were upheld by the Supreme Court and the Second Look Unit. We look forward to continuing our work to protect the public through the excellent and efficient administration of justice. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Stallings. Finance Committee, Ms. LeBron, do you have anything to report? Okay. And Audit Committee, Mr. Protula. Nothing, anything to report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the board will remember that we have a statutory obligation to submit our audit financial statements on the April 30th of each year to the legislature. The staff and the auditors have been hard at work. Unfortunately, because of COVID-19, it was a little more difficult to complete the fieldwork, and so we're still tracking on time, but with a very tight schedule. We have a Audit Committee meeting scheduled for the 28th of April. And we will make any final comments that we have, and we still intend to have it submitted on April 30th, and we will bring it forward to the full board at the May Board Meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Protula. All right, moving on to the agenda items. The first is 701.
Mr. Chair, may I note that a hand went up, and I didn't catch exactly when it went up, and I don't know if the person intended to address the first item on the agenda.
Yeah, I was gonna see just before I, before.
The colleges.
So anyway, yeah, on the 2019 Annual Discipline Report, I do see a hand up from Galaxy S9. Don't know the name attached to that, but whoever that is who has their hand up, would you like to speak to this particular agenda item 701?
Hi, this is Raquel Hines. I actually, from the, representing the union. I intended to speak during public comment, so I can wait if you need me to.
It's really up to you. We're going to be interested to hear what you have to say. We can do it now, or we can wait until just before we address 703, the actual agenda item for approval of the MOU.
Okay, um, well, I can, I can wait right before the addressing of the item that this pertains to. Thank you so much.
Okay, fine. See you then. Okay, 701, the ADR, and who is presenting on that? Please, your mic is, there you go.
Hi, I, I am. Okay, Melanie Lawrence and I, I want to go ahead and share my screen. Oh, there we go. There. Can everyone see this presentation?
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, good afternoon, everyone. Pleased to share with you a presentation on the 2019 Annual Discipline Report. Today, Melanie Lawrence and I are going to share out highlights of the report, and right, you should have received or as a draft of the report. This report is due at the end of the month, and so we are willing to incorporate any feedback you have to offer as a result of this presentation or as a result of the draft that we shared. Started. So the presentation today, we're going to try to keep it as brief as possible because we're looking forward to our discussion. But first, I want to describe what is this ADR? Because we have a lot of new board members, we thought this would be a good thing to do. Next, I'll share out an overview of the 2019 ADR. And then I'll turn the presentation over to Melanie, who's going to give a little bit more context to the backlog. And then finally, we'll close with revisions and progress that we've already started to make on the draft that you all received. So first of all, what is the Annual Discipline Report? Well, this is an annual report that is required of the State Bar as a result of the Business and Professions Code. And that big quote right there is exactly what's laid out in the statute. If you go all the way to the bottom, it makes it clear that you're going to, we shall accurately complete descriptions of all of the following, and that's a list of 15 topics that were required to report out on statistics for each of these topics. So examples are backlog, case inventory disposition, disciplinary outcomes. So the report that we shared with you is a draft of the 2019 Annual Discipline Report. And before I describe it, I'd like to give a little bit of context to the report. Traditionally, this report has focused on the backlog statistics, and the reactions to the report have focused on the backlog statistics, as though all of OCT's work can be reduced to just that. And a few years ago, our staff decided that we would like to, this report to revolve in a way that we really needed to, felt we needed to illuminate the operations initiatives and the results that the State Bar engages in to fulfill the public production mandate that go beyond the statistics that are required by statute. And so when you look at the report, there's a first section that is a narrative essentially, and it goes through several topics that we want to emphasize in this year's report. And again, it's a focus on all the operations and initiatives and results on that help us or that we feel are evidence of us fulfilling our mission. The second part of the report are 15 tables, and those relate to the 15 topics over in the previous slide. And those are the statute, statutory mandated reporting. And then finally, there's a series of appendices. Those appendices include things like a glossary for all the terms that are used throughout the report, methodology. There is an extensive discussion of the attorney discipline system, the case prioritization system, and our discipline system metrics that, that are new for our agency. Again, the purpose of those appendices are really for information only and to educate the reader and to give context for the rest of the report. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to go through highlights of the report, and then I'll turn it over to Melanie, who's going to take, kind of do a really deep dive into the backlog. So one of the things we talk about in this report is, that was new for 2019, is our new online complaint portal. And we believe that this, this portal, it really expanded access. And because we documented a 5% increase in the number of complaints filed last year. Another highlight is we added four link, four additional languages, Chinese, Korean, Russian, and Vietnamese. So add that to the pre-existing Spanish, we now have five languages other than English for which people can file complaints. What's also new for us this year is that we have automated tracking of criminal convictions. As a result of the re-fingerprinting mandate, we have over 190,000 attorneys complied. The Department of Justice now automatically sends us attorney criminal charges and convictions. So we now have new criminal history information for over 2,000 attorneys. Melanie is going to describe the case prioritization system, but for now, I just want to share that the case prioritization system allows OCTC to prioritize cases that pose the greatest threat to the public. And our analysis shows that the backlog of those cases in particular was reduced by 14%. We also have a section where we describe our targeted services to vulnerable communities, and in particular, the purpose of these, this outreach and targeted services is to educate the public about the danger posed by and ways to avoid predatory attorneys and scams by those who poses attorneys. And the number of cases related to NAUPL cases increased by 24% last year. As a result of our new system, Odyssey, our data collection efforts and ability to collect data and analyze data has really improved. And Odyssey has allowed my office in particular to, the capacity to track, assess, and improve the effectiveness of OCT's work. And on, we, having Odyssey really allowed a seamless transition to the mandatory telecommuting that we're currently involved in. And then finally, we have a section that describes OCTC's high standards and the result of those high standards that it uses as it engages in its work. This table shows the number of reviews that the complete review unit took on, as well as the number of walk-up petitions that were filed. And as you can see, the vast majority of OCTC's decisions are upheld. Okay, so now I'm going to turn it over to Melanie Lawrence, who's going to unpack the backlog for us.
Thanks, Lisa. So, excuse me, I wanted to start just briefly talking about what it is that we even mean when we're talking about backlog. So there is a statutory goal for OCTC to resolve complaints within 180 days. And that's 180 days from the day that the complaint walks in the door to our office to when it walks out the door, however it moves out the door. So that includes the time that it spends in our intake unit, if it moves forward to investigation, the time it spends in our investigations, and if it moves forward to pre-filing, the time that it spends in pre-filing as well. So the goal is 180 days for all of those processes. And the backlog is measured by statute at one specific date in time, and that's December 31st. So you can imagine what happens when you're working for one date and you're working on one number. And so historically, what has happened with our office is that staff really has been trained, and frankly, it became ingrained in the culture of our office, to work the oldest cases first and to work in a cycle in a year where mid-year, you're, you're beginning to really work feverishly towards the end of the year. And then once the end of the year is over, you're taking a breath. And so the beginning of the year, you start seeing the backlog number increase. And when we work this way, one, it's unhealthy for an organization and unhealthy for its staff. But also, we're chasing a number that is not consistent with public protection. And keeping in mind that our mission is public protection, what we lose when the only thing we work on is backlog is that the only thing we're looking at is working the oldest cases first. And so staff is only looking at working the oldest cases. And that's to the exclusion then of cases that may be coming in that are newer and less age, but pose more significant risk to the public. And the other challenge with doing that, and particularly as you get towards the end of the year, is, is staff naturally are incentivized to pick the lowest hanging fruit, if you will. They're looking for the cases that are the easiest to resolve rather than perhaps addressing cases which are more challenging, more complex, but are much more serious and impactful for public protection. So we really wanted to, to take a step back and look at the way that we're working and see how we could do it differently. And in 2018, we implemented a case prioritization system. Because like any organization that is under-resourced like OCTC has been, you have to decide if you have more work than you have staff to do it, what are the, what are the cases that you're going to prioritize? And so what we look at is what are the cases that pose the most significant public protection risk because that is our mission? And I think of it akin to, for example, a law enforcement agency. I have a number of family members and friends who are in law enforcement, and they will tell you that when you have patrol officers out on the street in a particular shift, you only have so many officers, and the reality is you always have more calls for service than you have officers to respond to them. And so what do they do? them. And so what do they do? They respond to the ones that are posing the most danger to the public, that are threatening life and limb. And those cases that aren't, so for example, the noise complaints, those go to the back of the line. And it doesn't mean that those kind of cases aren't important, in particular, to the people who, who are impacted by them. But it, what it does mean is that they're going to have to wait until the officer is able to resolve the cases of the, the life-threatening emergencies. So what they, what, what ends up happening is, at the end of the shift, they get to the noise complaints, maybe it moves on to the next. But they are, in fact, deprioritized. Because when we prioritize everything, nothing is prioritized. So what we did was, we looked at the kinds of cases that we have. And we said, what are those life-threatening kinds of cases for OCTC? What are the ones that pose the most significant public protection risk? And we came up with a prioritization system where we were able to categorize those cases. So just by way of an example, an intentional misappropriation of a significant amount of client money from a victim who is harmed and no restitution. Now, why is that a high priority case? One, because it's intentional misconduct. Two, because we have an identified victim who's been harmed. And three, because there's been no restitution, it suggests that there's no remorse or recognition of wrongdoing. And when we see an actor such as that, we worry that that person will repeat that behavior and victimize more people. Another kind of case that we prioritize is committing misconduct against vulnerable victims or multiple victims. So when we're talking about vulnerable victims, we're talking about people like the aged or incarcerated individuals or immigrants. Because if people are preying on vulnerable populations and we don't act, the likelihood that they will continue to victimize the public is high. So for purposes of the annual discipline report, this report and in 2018, we really tried to talk more about the work that we're doing in the context of how we are prioritizing our cases. So Lisa, can you move to the next slide, please? So I want to talk about our workload, first of all. And Lisa mentioned that we launched an online complaint portal in October of 2018. And that is a very good thing. It has made us much more accessible to the public. On the other hand, it's also increased the number of complaints year over year. So this graph shows you since 2016 to 2019 where we've been. And overall, it's an 11% increase in the number of complaints. And keep in mind, that's an increase in complaints without a corresponding increase in resources, because we're talking about to 2019. The graph that we're looking at now is just the complaints that are coming in from complaining witnesses. And that's important because it is, does not represent the totality of OCTC's workload. So for example, when, when you've heard about the re-fingerprinting cases and the conviction matters that results from that, those are not included in these numbers that you see. Or reportable actions, which are when banks, for example, report to us that there is an SF activity on a client trust account, those kinds of cases are not represented in these graphs. And there are a number of other such examples. So our workload is not just these numbers that you see. And the attorneys who are managing these numbers that you see are also managing those other cases that I mentioned. So let's look at what we've done in 2019. Lisa, can you move to the next slide, please? So the caseload clearance rate. So our objective is to resolve one case, at least one case for every one case that comes in. So this graph is going to show us where we are in terms of high priority cases and lower priority cases over 2018 and 2019. So on the left is our goal of one. In the middle is how we've done on our highest priority cases. On the left, we see that in 2018, for every, for every 100 cases, we resolved 126. These are in the highest priority cases. That's good. It's above the goal that we're looking for. In 2019, we were actually able to increase that. So in 2019, in the highest priority cases, we resolved 136 for every 100 cases that came in. So that is a great improvement, particularly in that area. So again, what happens when you are prioritizing some cases, you're deprioritizing others. So on the right-hand side, what you're seeing is our lower priority cases. And you see on the left-hand side, this is 2018, and our caseload clearance rate, we are, we were resolving 94 cases for every 100. In 2019, we did improve upon that. We're at 97 cases for every 100. We're still not where we want to be, but we're getting closer. Okay, can we move on to the next one? Now, what does all of this mean for backlog generally? Well, big picture is, one, we have decreased the backlog in high priority cases by 14% over 2018. That is great. What, what else has happened? The backlog in the lower priority cases has in fact increased. So looking at this chart, this shows us the backlog over time from 2017 to 2019. So for example, in the chart in 2019, the totality of the blue cases, the blue cases are the lower priority cases, the red cases being the high priority cases, the total sum of those is the total backlog. But you see that the backlog is entirely driven by the lower priority cases. Not ideal that, that it's growing, but at the same time, we're having an effect because we are in fact managing the highest priority cases overall. So in 2018, we had 599 low, high priority cases in backlog. And in 2019, we see a drop to 518 lower priority cases in backlog. And one thing I want to mention to you also that I forgot to is, I told you that the backlog is measured by that one date in time, December 31st. And these numbers are consistent with that. That's what we're talking about as of December 31st. But because we have implemented the case prioritization system, it has allowed us to be much more mindful of our inventory throughout the year. We're not just working on December 31st, we're working throughout the year at consistency. And that's, that's demonstrated in the metrics and the new metrics that went into effect in early 2018, and that are reported to the board every month, so that we can actually manage this more consistently throughout the year. So if we can move on to the next slide. So I want to talk a little bit more about those high priority cases that are in backlog. So this, this chart shows you what we call suspended inactive cases. So what we know about cases and complaints against attorneys is that oftentimes, we get multiple complaints against one attorney. So when we're talking about all of these numbers that we've been talking about, we're talking about number of complaints. We're not talking about number of attorneys. So the reality is that one attorney can account for more than one complaint, and sometimes many more complaints. So when we're looking at this particular inventory, what we're looking at is, some of our cases are inactive, those are the blue cases, and some of them are in suspended, that's on the left-hand side. And why is that? Well, when we have multiple complaints against one attorney, it's very possible that one or a few of those cases will result in the disbarment of that attorney. And when we see that, and when we're able to identify it, we take all of the other cases, all of those other complaints, and we put them in a suspended status. And what that means operationally is, we are not dedicating resources to those suspended cases. Why? Because in the one or few complaints that we are able to move forward, we know that we're going to get disbarment. And we can only disbar an attorney one time, and we only have jurisdiction over their law license. So it doesn't make sense to expend the energy and the resources on those other suspended cases. So looking at the 518 highest priority cases that were in backlog at the end of 2019, 284 of those, so over half, were those kinds of suspended cases, because we have other cases, I'll tell you, for example, one instance where we have attorney that we expect to be disbarred in one matter, and that attorney accounts for 69 of these 284 cases, because they continue to age as they sit there in that suspended inventory. So but if we look then even a little bit further, and this is what we're looking at when we see the graph in the right-hand side, then we're taking that number of suspended cases, and we're saying, of those suspended cases, how many attorneys does that account for? Okay, so how many of those attorneys are responsible for those 284 cases? In this instance, 53 attorneys account for those 284 cases. And when you look at those cases, then you, then we also ask ourselves, of those, if, of that subset, how many of those attorneys actually are still entitled to practice law? Because a number of people are suspended for a variety of different reasons. It could be administrative suspensions or other kinds of suspensions. And when we look at that, only 23 of the cases in those suspended high priority cases, only 23 attorneys are entitled to practice law. So we're making good inroads into that particular population. Okay, can we move on to the next slide, please? So what does all this mean for 2020? Well, as I mentioned, the numbers that we were talking about for 2019 and the progress that we made was made without additional resources for OCTC. And we know that in 2020, we received a fee increase, and that part of that fee increase will go to resources to OCTC. In fact, we'll be able to add one entire team to Los Angeles to work these cases. So that is a very good thing. We have already begun the recruitment and onboarding of those staff. What we know about that is that it does take time to train people and get people fully up to speed, but we are moving along. The other reality of 2020 is, we are still going to be impacted throughout the year by those re-fingerprinting cases. We have many more to work through, and they will continue to impact our inventory overall. Nonetheless, the additional resources will help us. And for 2020, our goal is to further improve our management of the priority cases. And recognizing the fact that, as a result, the lower priority cases in backlog has substantially improved, increased for 2020, we want to look to improve the management of those lower priority cases as well.
Thank you, Melanie. Okay, so as I mentioned when we first started, our team has been engaging in revisions of the draft report that you all received. And I just want to share the status of that. So, and this is also based on feedback that we have received from stakeholders that we reached out to review the, the draft. So we know that we need to address the overall growth in the backlog, probably a little bit more directly. We're also working on reducing redundancy in the narrative that we've identified, and some of our reviewers have identified. And we're also gonna work on clarifying charts to improve their explanatory power on, something like, for example, the charts that we showed in this presentation, several of them are, are improvements on, upon the charts that you see in the draft. Okay, so we can open up to questions now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa, and thank you, Melanie. Are there any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, Brandon Stallings?
Yes.
So I just wanted to, before we get into questions, just thank Lisa, Melanie, Steve, Dag, and Donna for just all the work that they put into this. And really, making sure that Ruben and I understood what's going on in OCTC during this time. And one of the things that Ruben and I did was, to the point about the new case management system, they had us go through the intake process for a new complaint. And a majority of this is data entry that's done by, by a non-lawyer staff member. But it just highlighted for us how much time it actually takes to input all of this data into the system. Now, on the back end, the board gets much better data and more consistent data. And so we can see, you know, really what's going on with OCTC. But it just does take a lot more time at the, at the beginning. So that was one thing that I was really impressed with, with the way that OCTC staff has adapted their ability to work within a new system and to do so efficiently. The other thing was, the fingerprint information that we're receiving back and, or received back from DOJ, one of the things that was notable to me is that we've assigned, I think, it's between six and seven paralegals, and that's all they do. Eight, I will sift through that information, get the appropriate documents. And once those cases hit state bar court, there is a mandatory timeline that they're now on. State bar court has devoted significant resources to the fingerprint cases. And anecdotally, it seems most of the convictions are popping up now with the fingerprints or DUI related. So it's between some of our LAP objections, or not objections, but LAP goals in reducing the amount of substance abuse and mental health issues with lawyers. Though, those are some interesting things that I've learned in the past couple months as Rad Chair, and it's one to thank everybody involved for the ADR.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stallings. Any other comments or questions for Melanie or Lisa?
I have a quick, quick question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Hi, Melanie and Lisa, thank you very much for this, for the report. Very thorough and appreciate it. I said a quick question on the, you said you were gonna be able to add one entire team. How many members is on the team? And how do you think that's, did the, how do you, when do you think you'll start feeling the impact of that team?
So typically, a team is made up of anywhere from 12 to 14 people. And so it's generally a supervisor, some attorneys, usually four attorneys, and about five investigators, and then some support staff. We have already been able to, actually, on Monday, we will have onboarded all of the new investigators. So we will have already filled all of the positions. And we are in recruitment for the attorney positions. So again, I mean, they, they all have to go through training, and it takes time to get people up to speed. We want to make sure that they're successful in their career with us. But my hope is that by the end of summer, we'll have most of the team in place. And I would, I would certainly hope by, by the end of the year, we will see some, some impact.
Thanks. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, it's Sonia Dillon.
Go ahead. Yes, yeah, Sonia.
I was just wondering if, if there was a spike or any, you know, activity in the last few weeks that we have been in shelter-in-place complaints, or is it, are you getting complaints over the last few weeks that we have been in?
Yeah.
The COVID situation.
Yes, so we are still receiving complaints, both online and by mail. I will say that for the last few weeks, they have been fewer complaints than we have been seeing. So I don't know if that trend will continue. And then the other thing that I wonder about is, once we begin to return to normal, whatever our new normal will look like, will we see an increase for some reason in those complaints? We don't know. But for right now, we are seeing, over the last few weeks, fewer complaints.
Thank you.
Other questions? Donna, I see that this is an item for approval, but I understand that there's more work to be done. Is, and I don't see a resolution in the materials that I have access to. Is, are you looking for approval of this report as it stands now?
So Dag should have the resolution.
Mr. Chair, this is the secretary.
Mr. Chair, this is the secretary. If I could ask Lisa to terminate her PowerPoint, I can put the resolution up.
Okay.
Lisa?
Yes, tell me. Oh, stop, share, stop, share. Thank you.
It hides at the top of the screen. It hides at the top of the screen.
Does anyone have any questions about what the, or the expected final edits are or the scope? Or any other questions regarding this particular resolution before we see whether it will be moved? All right, the chair will entertain a motion to move the resolution.
Brandon Stallings, so moved.
Sonia Dillon seconds.
All right, Ms. Cohen, will you call the roll?
Oh, Alan. Alan is Sean.
Yes.
I should have spoken up earlier. I think the plan, as I understand it, is to have this completed in consultation with the chair and vice chair of the board and RAD leadership. So if, who is the moving party? Brandon, will you accept that as a friendly amendment?
I will.
Thank you.
All right, is that acceptable, Sean?
Yes, thank you.
Is that acceptable, Brandon?
It is.
All right. All right. Ms. Cohen, will you now call the roll, please?
Rotten?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Hi.
Bella Cruz? Dillon?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Iglesias?
Yes.
LeBron?
Yes.
Manning?
Yes.
Protula?
Yes.
Selig?
Yes.
Stallings?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, item 702 is emergency rule changes necessitated by COVID-19. And let me see. Dag, I don't have, because the PowerPoint is up, I don't have access to the, whether there are any hands raised. I know we've had the one. Is there anybody else who's indicated any interest in commenting on this from the public?
There doesn't appear to be. I'm not seeing any, any hands raised on the attendees.
All right, fine. Well, then, Mr. Chang, will you present item two, please?
Uh oh.
It's moving, but there's no more.
Oh.
Try that.
Okay, sorry about that. So this is James Chang from the Office of General Counsel. I'm here today to present on a package of eight proposed emergency rule changes that have been necessitated by the COVID-19 emergency. These proposed rule changes fall broadly into four general categories. The first is an expansion of staff authority to grant waivers of various penalties. The second group is various deadline extensions for licensees for them to comply before being suspended or enrolled on inactive status. The third group of changes is various deadline extensions for state bar programs. And then the fourth group is various rule changes to permit electronic service in state bar proceedings. So I'll now present, I'll now describe each of those eight resolutions briefly. And then I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. In resolution one, staff proposes to expand the authority for staff to approve waivers of late payment penalties by licensees who are impacted by the COVID-19 emergency. Under current state bar rules, staff have limited authority to approve certain requests for waivers. And all other requests must be submitted to the board for approval. Under the proposed resolution, staff would be granted the authority to decide on a case by case basis, any request for waivers of licensing fee late payment penalties for licensees who can demonstrate that they have been financially impacted by the COVID-19 emergency. And staff would also be authorized to take other reasonable measures in response to various payment issues that licensees may have. Resolutions two, three, and four address various compliance deadlines for licensees. The board may recall that ordinarily, staff in May of each year bring various resolutions to the board, recommending that the board approve the suspension or enrollment on involuntary and active status of attorneys who have failed to pay their license fees, license fees, or failed to comply with their MCL requirement. Normally, the board would approve that resolution in May and the board would approve a final deadline of June 30th for those licensees to come into final compliance. And if they are not in compliance by June 30, then on July 1st, they would be either suspended for failure to pay fees or they would be placed on involuntary and active status if they failed to comply with their MCL requirement. Due to the current emergency, we recognize that licensees may have difficulty complying with their obligations at this time. And so we would propose to extend the schedule by three months so that the final deadline for compliance for payment of license fees and MCL compliance would be September 30th instead of June 30th. One other compliance deadline, which is new this year because of the rollout of the fingerprinting program, is the fingerprinting compliance requirement. Most of the licensees in California were already required to comply with the fingerprinting requirement by December 1st. And if they were not, then they were already placed on involuntary and active status on February 1st. However, there was four categories of certain licensees who were exempt from the December 1st requirement and had a later compliance date of February 1st because of their unique circumstances. Or, you know, when they were, they came on active status. And so they did initially have a February 1st deadline and they would have been in a grace period up until the final deadline of June 30th for compliance. We understand that most of the fingerprinting life scan vendors in the state are currently closed. And so licensees who are trying to comply with their fingerprinting requirement at this time are likely having difficulty being able to comply. And so we also propose to extend the final deadline for compliance from June 30th to September 30th. Resolutions five and six address deadline extensions for various state bar programs. In resolution five, we recommend delaying from June 30th to September 30th, the final deadline for MCL providers to renew their status. Typically, in order to renew their status, MCL providers have to provide a large renewal packet that includes the attendance logs of past MCL programs to show that they have been keeping, you know, the, the records required by the MCL rules. Because many law offices are closed and because many MCL providers are not working in their physical offices right now, we recognize there may be some difficulty for the providers to be able to gather all of these paper materials and submit them by the June 30th deadline. So we would propose also a three-month extension here to September 30th. And then finally, the deadline extension for law corporation renewals, we would also propose to extend. This one is from May 3rd to June 30th. The reason for this is that the renewal forms for the law corporation renewals were sent out by state bar staff in mid-March, right before the shelter in place orders were issued. And again, this is a paper-based process where the law corporations are required to have the form signed by a shareholder. They're required to submit a paper check and then send it back to the state bar to renew their law corporation status. And again, because of the difficulties of the stay-at-home situation, we would propose to extend that deadline to June 30th. The final category proposed changes addresses electronic service in state bar proceedings. Currently, state bar rules do not explicitly recognize or permit electronic service in various proceedings. This has obviously become an issue now because a lot of attorneys and a lot of parties are not working, you know, in their physical law offices where they're able to easily print and send documents. And so there has been an increase in the number of requests to allow electronic service. And so in resolution seven, we propose to adopt an interim amendment to rule 5.13 of the rules of the state bar that would permit electronic service in fee arbitration proceedings. And in resolution eight, we would recommend an adoption of an interim rule to allow electronic service in state bar court proceedings. And I would note that on item eight, as to state bar court proceedings, the state bar court and the chair of the board and chair of RAD had previously discussed this issue because it started to emerge as problematic soon after we entered this stay-at-home and mandatory telework situation. And so chair of the board and the chair of RAD had authorized the state bar court to provide interim relief in the form of a general order. State bar court on April 3rd issued general order 2004 that temporarily allowed electronic service in state bar court proceedings pending further action by the board. However, it is the board's authority to enact any changes to the rules of procedure. And so that is why we are presenting this matter to the board to codify what the state bar court has already begun to allow. We would also note that interim rule 5.2. Sorry, interim rule 5.26.1 largely mirrors the general order that the state bar court issued on April 3rd. So the parties, OCTC and the Defense Bar, are already operating within this framework. And so we drafted the rule in this way to ensure that there is continuity and consistency in the way that they're operating. In terms of the legal authority for the board to enact all eight of these changes without public comment, rule 1.10C of the Rules of the State Bar of California permits the board, in the case of an emergency, to enact changes to rules without circulating them for public comment, as we ordinarily would do. However, those interim measures may only remain in effect for 120 days. And so we've noted that in the rule text and these rule changes, if approved by the board today, would be in effect until August 14th. I also want to note that on the issues of electronic service and fee arbitration and state bar court proceedings, of course, this current emergency has brought to light the fact that we do not have clear rules, or at least until now, did not have clear rules in place for electronic service. And so that has initiated a discussion about whether it would be wise to enact permanent rules to allow electronic service as the state of California already does in the Code of Civil Procedure. And so we're going to continue to have those discussions and we'll return to the board potentially with further items to consider on electronic service. But we thought it was important to enact these emergency measures now to provide immediate relief to the parties. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Chang?
Alan, I have, I have two. Nobody else has a question? So James, thank you very much for that. On the item for electronic service in state bar court proceedings, I have, so I have two questions. One is we had communications before the meeting about what seems to be a typo in subsection C1 at that meeting. Do you have an amendment? It's a very simple amendment. Do you have that ready to show to the board?
I do, yes. And I provided that to the secretary. It's essentially a grammatical correction. So that in resolution eight, the secretary already has the change and has already added that to the resolution for today. Subdivision C1 of the proposed rule in resolution eight. A little bit farther down. We're just adding the words to C1. This is to indicate that electronic service is complete at the time that the document is transmitted. This was just a grammatical fix to the version that was circulated to make the sentence read correctly. So it would read in full, "Service of a pleading or document that is served by electronic service is deemed complete at the time of the electronic transmission of the pleading document."
Okay, great. Thank you. And then a more substantive question. So you mentioned that these rules will only be effective till August 14th because a permanent rule needs to go out for public comment. I just wonder, are we going to, it most likely will make sense to leave this in place for some time. So are we going to have a, can the board extend this at a subsequent meeting in, say, July? Beyond August, or do we need to expedite the promulgation of this change for public comment so we can adopt it on a permanent basis? I understand you said there were discussions going on. I just want to make sure we're not going to create another problem starting on August 14th.
Right, so the, the rule regarding public comment allows the board to suspend the requirement of public comment to enact a rule immediately. And in that case, that enactment is effective for 120 days. You know, when, when a rule has not been circulated for public comment, those rules, of course, are enacted by the board. The board can waive or suspend even that 120-day limitation if the board so wishes. But in the first instance, we proposed to follow the, the literal requirement of that. We will further consider, as, as we take a look at the circumstances, the emergency and how long this lasts and whether these rules need to be in place beyond August 14th. We'll confer internally among the best way to bring any measures back to the board that might require either renewal of these rules or the, the board approving, you know, a waiver of that 120-day limitation and extending the rules beyond that.
Okay, very good. Unless there are, unless other board members have comments, I would move to approve all of the resolutions except number four, which relates to fingerprinting, because I want to discuss that separately. So that my motion is to approve all the resolutions except number four about fingerprinting.
This is Mark. I have kind of a procedural question. If, if one is among the groups to which one or more of these rules apply, does, do you have to recuse yourself from that? For example, if you're in MCL compliance group that has to report by, I believe it was May 1st, or you have, for number six, if you have a corporation renewal due, do you have to recuse yourself from, from voting on this?
Alan, I can answer that.
Please, Vanessa.
Thanks for raising that, Mark. No, it's, while there is a personal or financial interest, it applies to such a broad swath of people that you are able to vote on it.
All right, thank you. Mark, are you okay then?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Brandon Stallings, I would second the motion.
All right. The motion is to approve all of the eight proposals except number four, which I understand, Sean, you want to have further discussion on?
Yes.
All right. All right, we have a motion and seconded. Are there any further comments or discussion? Ms. Cohen, will you please call the roll?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Rotten?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Hi.
Bella Cruz? Dillon?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Iglesias?
Yes.
LeBron?
Yes.
Manning?
Yes.
Protula?
Yes.
Selig?
Yes.
Stallings?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. Sean, would you like to discuss number four?
Sure. So, so I have a concern about the proposal for number four, which would sort of extend, it would propose to extend from June 30th to September 30th, the deadline. the deadline for what I understand is a fairly small group of attorneys to be re-fingerprinted. And what I suggest the board, and I think, well, and I think this presents different policy issues than the other proposals, because there is a really important public protection reason why the, all of the attorneys have needed to be re-fingerprinted. The deadline for these attorneys was, has already been extended once. And so everyone in the group affected by this resolution has, has missed the deadline, is already subject to a financial penalty. So I think we should be cautious about extending the deadline for attorneys who have not met the deadline to be re-fingerprinted. But we do have a current problem with the live scan system not being readily available and the stay at home orders. So my sense of this is that there's actually not an urgency to extend this deadline that we can consider this at our next regularly scheduled meeting in mid-May and assess at that point with a report from staff, whether the live scan sites are readily available or not. Because having gone through this fingerprinting process myself, I mean, it's very easy. It takes 20 minutes, 30 minutes tops. And so if we are in a situation in mid-May where the live scan sites are available, I think it's, still provides plenty of time for this group of attorneys to be fingerprinted by the end of June. And if not, we can assess at that point how to proceed. One alternative, the board might, oh, there are various alternatives the board might have. Among them would be a shorter extension of time, say for 30 days. And another alternative would be to require people who, to submit, as we do with other financial penalties, for example, to submit an explanation of why they can't complete the live scan process. So for example, even if the live scan is available and the stay at home orders have been relaxed, it may, there are certain people with medical conditions who will need to remain especially cautious. And it may make sense to give them additional time. But we may, the board may want to address those situations on an individual basis with a showing of good cause rather than extending the deadline for this entire group of people. So the end result of my view, if you agree with it, is that we take no action today. The staff will return to us at our meeting in about one month with a further report on the status of this fingerprinting availability and a proposal to handle the final deadline for this group of attorneys.
Is there any discussion about Sean's proposal?
Alan, if, if you think it might be helpful, I can just explain to the board who, who the groups of attorneys are that, that fall into this scenario and why, why it was that they were not subject to the December 1 deadline and we have that June 20 deadline instead.
Please.
So the, for, for, as Sean said, for virtually all of the attorneys in California, they had to be fingerprinted by June 1st of 2019 or be subject to suspension. In November, the board determined that several groups of people shouldn't be subject to suspension December 1. They, that, those groups included people who newly transferred to to eligible status after June 1, 2019. So less than six months before the December 1 deadline hit. So they newly transferred to eligible status. You had judges who left the bench and newly transferred to active status from, once they left the bench. Those who were newly admitted to the bar, but who had passed their moral character prior to July 2017, who also would need to get, get fingerprinted. And so those are really the categories of people that in November, the board said, yeah, it makes sense for these folks not to be subject to the December 1 deadline to get suspended and adopted a deadline of June 30th, 2020, to require them to get fingerprinted or be suspended after that date. Staff talked with the California Department of Justice and were told that about 30%, only about 30% of the live scan vendors are currently in operation. And one thing that just occurred to me as we were speaking, as Sean was speaking, the next board meeting is scheduled for May 14th. The Los Angeles, Los Angeles County stay at home orders were extended to May 15th. And so I don't know if, I don't know that there will be a change in the, in the ability of, of people in the Los Angeles area to get fingerprinted between now and the board meeting. So I'm not sure if we would have, have that much additional information, at least for the southern part of the state to, to, to give the board at that, at that time. But if after May 15th, all of the live scan vendors opened to the public, then as Sean indicated, there would be 45 days that they would still have in order to be, in order to get fingerprinted before facing suspension if we don't change the deadline.
Do you, Donna, or does James have any information on when live scan expects to be able to increase the number of sites that will be available? Or is this, will this last as long as the current governmental restrictions on non-essential businesses and so forth?
So we don't, we don't have any insight into, into that. Obviously, some of them, you know, 30% of them are open. There's some determination that some of them do meet, meet the requirements for essential, essential services. So for whatever reason, some of them stayed open and some of them chose to close. I also have a note here that the largest group of those people who are needing to get re-fingerprinted, to get fingerprinted in this period, are those who are actually needing to, to get fingerprinted again. Because the first time that they did it right before, sometime before December 1, their, their fingerprints were rejected. And we are in the process, they are in the process of getting re-fingerprinted. I, I have, I have to say, I am one of those people who have difficulty getting fingerprinted. And my fingerprints were rejected the first time. I obviously did it much earlier than the deadline, so I don't fall into that pool. But just, I'm bringing that up just to point out that getting your fingerprint rejected does not mean that you are necessarily a public, a, a, a public protection risk.
All right. Does anyone have any other comments or thoughts?
Alan, this is Josh. I'm buying with, I think Sean's suggestion of handling this the next board meeting is, is more than acceptable with me. I would also say that it would be plausible for us to set the date 30 days after all emergency orders have been released. Because we know they will all open up all of the live scan immediately thereafter. So if, at the next board meeting, we want to set a deadline, we could do so based on, you know, the stay at home orders being lifted.
Okay. Unless anyone wants to make a motion to reinstate number four and to take a vote on it, we will move on. Does anyone wish to make such a motion? All right, then we're through with item number 702. We're moving on to item 703, approval of the 2020 through 2022 memorandum of understanding. And I know that Ms. Raquel Hines has indicated an interest in speaking to the board. And she is, of course, our union representative and we're delighted to have you with us. And please share your thoughts.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, members of the Board of Trustees and management that is present. My name is Raquel Hines and I am the District Labor Council President for the State Bar Bargaining Units, who are represented by SEIU Local 1000. I'm speaking today on the tentative agreement that is before you for ratification. As you know, our bargaining team and your management representatives worked hard over the last year to negotiate the next union contract. And we reached a tentative agreement on March 20th, the day after Governor Newsom issued the statewide shelter in place order and after most of us were already telecommuting full time. Despite logistical hurdles, we met with our members about the tentative agreement and held a ratification vote in which 98% of the attorney unit and 97% of the general unit voted to ratify the tentative agreement. This process was one of give and take. We did not get everything we asked for and management did not get everything they asked for. But we think this is a fair agreement. And we hope that you will see fit to ratify the agreement as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. All right. At this point, we are going to go into closed session pursuant to government code section 11126, subparagraph C17. We will return from closed after our discussion. I would imagine that would be probably 20 to 30 minutes, although the time can certainly vary depending on the amount of discussion that we engage in. So those of you on the board should have the information about the new link to join the closed session. And we will return to open session in a little while. Thank you. Mr. McLeod, do you see Ms. Cohen has joined us or not?
I don't see her, so I can take the rule if you would like.
If you would, please.
Broughton?
Here.
Chen?
Here.
Sisneros?
Here.
De La Cruz?
Dellen?
Here.
Duran?
Here.
Iglesias? LeBron?
Here.
Manning?
Here.
Bertula?
Here.
Saleig?
Here.
Stallings?
Here.
Steinbrecker?
Here.
And is, there we go. Chris?
Yep, I'm on. Sorry.
Got you. All good.
All right. Thank you. All right. After extensive discussion, closed, and are ready to address the, the recommendation, resolution concerning the MOU. The chair will entertain a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Ruben Duran. I'd like to thank my colleagues on the board for the discussion in closed session. Thank our staff for the answers to our questions and the information you provided us. Thank our employees and their representatives for what was a very productive negotiation process. And with that, I would like to move approval of the 2020, 2022 memorandum of understanding as presented by staff. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Yes, this is Jose Sisneros. I would like to second the motion and second the comments, Ruben.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion of this matter? All right. If not, Mr. McLeod, has Ms. Cohen joined yet?
Not that I can see.
All right.
I have the roll call sheet here for the vote.
Her internet is down.
Okay.
All right. Would you please take the roll then, Mr. McLeod?
Yes, of course. Broughton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Sisneros?
Yes.
De La Cruz?
Dellen?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Iglesias?
Yes.
LeBron?
Yes.
Manning?
Yes.
Bertula?
Abstain.
Saleig?
Yes.
Stallings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I, I want to say just a couple of words regarding this. The board engaged, as you can see from the time that we were away and closed, engaged in a long and I think very fruitful discussion. There were many opinions and, and perspectives exchanged. The board is certainly, I, I think, I am personally very pleased that we have passed this resolution with the overwhelming support of the board members. But I also recognize, as we all do, that we are in very uncharted waters here in terms of what the coronavirus situation is creating. Tremendous uncertainty in all aspects of our daily and financial lives. So we have recognized that in our discussions. We do value very highly the cooperative, the cooperation that we've received from the union. We believe that this is a, a, a good and thoughtful package for the next three years. But at the same time, as fiduciaries, we also understand that we have to carefully monitor our existing financial situation. So we will have to work closely with the union in the days, months, and perhaps even years ahead to keep all of our eyes on the evolving financial situation. With that, again, we're very pleased to have adopted this resolution and, and passed the, the MOU. So thank you very much. Now, on to item 704.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm presenting on item 704, which is an extension of retiree health benefits to represented employees. One aspect of the memorandum of understanding that the board just approved is that the state bar has agreed to extend retiree health benefits to represented employees who retire on or after January 1st, 2020, on the same terms that are currently offered to confidential employees. The board approved extension of, of those retiree health benefits to confidential employees in November of 2019. And to accomplish this extension of retiree health benefits to represented employees requires amendments of the plan as represented in exhibit A to the attached board item. And this item simply asks for board, the board's formal approval of these amendments to the plan such that represented employees will be eligible to receive the same retiree health benefits as to confidential employees, which is a benefit paid at the same level as current active employees. So 80% for 2020 upon reaching 15 years of service in any CalPERS contracting agency.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Are there any questions? If not, the, the chair will entertain a motion to approve.
I'm moved. Ruben Duran?
This is Jose. I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Sarah's back.
All right. Mr. McLeod, please take the roll.
Needed to unmute my microphone there.
You're getting all two.
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Sisneros?
Aye.
Dylan?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Iglesias?
Yes.
LeBron?
Yes, yes.
Manning?
Yes.
Bertula?
Yes.
Saleg?
Yes.
Stallings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Our final item is item 705. And?
That's me.
Who will be presenting on?
This is Steve Mazur.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mazur?
Yes, this will be very quick. This item requests revisions to the rules and regulations pertaining to the employment of executive staff and confidential staff as related to the retiree health benefits plan. As you recall, last November, the board approved amendments to the retiree health plan to extend to confidential staff retiree health benefits comparable to those provided to executive staff, and to change the eligibility requirement to 15 years of CalPERS service credit as opposed to just state bar service credit. Those amendments to the plan were subsequently made, but we've not yet updated the executive and confidential rules to reflect those amendments to the plan. So this resol- the resolution in the agenda items simply updates the rules to make them consistent with the previously adopted resolution to amend the plan.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Mazur on this item? Right. And I do realize that I forgot to ask if there were any members of the public who would like to address this item. Being none? All right. If there's no further comments, the chair will entertain a motion to approve.
This is Debbie Manning. Still moved?
Thank you.
Second, Sonia Dellen.
And thank you, Ms. Dellen. Any, any other comments or questions? Please, call the rolls for McLeod.
Moved by Manning, seconded by Dylan, Broughton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Sisneros?
Aye.
Dylan?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Iglesias?
Yes.
LeBron?
Yes.
Manning?
Yeah.
Bertula?
Yes.
Saleg?
Yes.
Stallings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. There is no further business. And having completed the agenda, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.
Yes.
Bye.
Thanks, everybody.
Hopefully, everybody can make their flights after it being an hour longer.
Six-hour drive, Brandon.